Updates to our school safety planning and response protocols. We're very happy to talk about that tonight with you. We're going to have a number of speakers tonight. We're going to have a short video and then talk a little bit about what we already have in the works going forward that we're working on for the rest of this school year to help frame some of the discussion for this evening. And then at the end of that presentation, it's probably about 20 minutes or so of us presenting and talking with you, we'll then open it up for just a community discussion and some community forum talking points. So on my right, I just want to introduce a few people. Kelly Rogers is our district-wide coordinator for reading and ELL and Title I. And one might ask, well, how does school emergency preparedness fall into that particular role? Kelly has been wonderful. Kelly actually was formerly the principal in Chelmsford at Center Elementary School. Kelly had done a lot of work in her previous district around school safety and whatnot. In a lot of our different district administrators last year, we asked to take on different projects. And Kelly actually was the administrator who was charged with leading a team of administrators in the district to look at our current practices, look at what's actually happening in other school districts, and help revamp some of our protocols. So we're really thrilled that Kelly was able to do that. Next to Kelly is again Gary Ryan, our fire chief. We're very happy that he's here this evening. Chief Jim Spinney from the police department. And I'll actually let Jim introduce the law enforcement officials that are here this evening.
Sure. I'm with Lieutenant Todd Hunter, who oversees all of our ALICE protocols. And I also have school resource officer Dan Sullivan and Officer Nick Zeminski, who oversees a majority of our tactical training.
Great. And we're going to come back to the chief in a second, but I will just introduce a few of the school administrators that are here this evening. If you don't mind just kind of holding up your hand when you call. Jeff Parks, who's the principal of Parker Middle School. Steve Murray, who's the principal of Chelmsford High School. Molly McMahon, who is the principal of South Row Elementary School. Just scanning real quick to make sure I'm not missing anyone. We have in the back right Diana Full Reader, who is the principal of Center. Betsy Dolan, who is one of our new assistant principals. And she's sitting next to Jason Romallo, our other new assistant principal at the elementary school level. Betsy is this year at Byham and Harrington Elementary Schools. I got it right. And Jason is actually split between South Row and Center. So they are here as well. And I think that wraps up our school administrators who are here this evening. I didn't miss anyone, correct? Okay. So I'd like to actually turn it over to Chief Spinney for a few moments to make a couple of comments. And then Kelly Rogers is going to walk you through a little bit of a presentation that we did with some of our staff in the schools just a couple of weeks ago. And then I'm going to come back and talk about what we currently have in effect for this coming year, what you have to look forward to. So Chief Spinney.
Sure. Dr. Lang, thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for coming. It's a very important program that we're moving to in town. And the police department is in this 110%. We have developed a partnership and a collaborative relationship with the entire school district, from the principals to the teachers, to the superintendent, to his staff. Kelly has been amazing, really driving the bus on a lot of these protocols. We couldn't do it without her. We have made a lot of progress in this community over the last few years between the police, fire, and school department. We have added two full-time resource officers in this town over the last few years. We just added our second Officer Sullivan to the middle schools at the beginning of this year. We have done a complete, or in the process of doing a complete safety audit district-wide, buildings, protocols, et cetera. We have enhanced communication between public safety and the school district, direct and immediate and absolute communication between my dispatch center and every school in this town. We've added, we've probably doubled the safety cameras district-wide. I think there's over 80 cameras just for the high school alone. And I know it's a priority of Dr. Lang to continue to build on that system along with our IT staff in town, to keep building on each school to enhance safety as much as possible. We have been working towards this ALICE rollout for the better part of a year, and we could not have done it without everyone's cooperation. This is more about school staff than police and fire staff, believe it or not. And the school employees have unbelievably stepped up. The teachers, the admin staff, the principals, couldn't do it without them. And you know what? We couldn't do it without the parents either. So it's about keeping kids safe. It's about providing options. That's really what, if you break ALICE down to its simplest parts, it's options. It's options for everyone to make decisions to result in the best chances of their safety. That's really what it's all about. So I appreciate the forum. I look forward to any questions you may have. And again, thanks for being here.
Just before Kelly goes, Chief Ryan, would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Dr. Lang. Thank you, Kelly, for inviting me. Welcome staff, principals. As you know, the Chelmsford Fire Department has a long, strong relationship with the schools. When Kelly invited me to this forum, I was starting to jot some notes down about some involvement we've had with the schools, many of which you know. We recently completed our evacuation drills with the schools. Captain Ryan Hool, you probably know, you see him in the schools all the time. Our firesafe program is underway at the elementary schools. Our firesafe educator, Michelle Sacco, is excellent. And she has asked me to, I got one chain was plugged, that we are having our open house on Sunday, October 28th. If you've been to the open house, it's well-attended. We have a Halloween theme, and we have a Halloween costume for the kids. So Michelle Sacco is our firesafe officer. She works at the elementary schools, with the principals. She does a very good job. We always enjoy our participation with the high schools, with Spirit Week during the Thanksgiving football game. We always enjoy the competition. Our life safety inspections continue year-round. We're in the schools all the time. And that's when we interact with the teachers, we discuss paper on the walls, access issues, you know what we're looking for. Electrical issues, space heaters. We enjoy our annual read-in program, participation with the schools. Our mock car accident at the Chelmsford High School, we certainly derive a lot of value from that drill. And I think the students do, and the teachers, and the questions we get, I think that's a lot of value. And we look forward to continuing that with the police and Trinity. Our annual fourth grade drive-to-school program is very popular. The ALICE training and active school shooting drill we did in April is something we recently have done, and we certainly look to strengthen and further our collaboration with both the police, Trinity MS, and Dr. Lang and his staff. So thank you for having me today.
Again, I think one of the other things to be thinking about, when the school committee brought up this idea about having the community forums, we do a lot of work each day within the schools, between the school department staff and the fire department, police department, all of our first responders in the district. But the families in the community don't necessarily always see the background work that's actually being done. So that's why we thought today would be a great night to be able to talk about some of the safety enhancements we've made in the district, how we actually respond to different things within the buildings, and allow that dialogue so that you feel comfortable because you send your kids to us each and every day. We take their safety as a top priority. So we want to be able to share what we can with you about how we actually respond and let you see firsthand how the different agencies work with each other each day to make sure your kids and staff are really as safe as they possibly can. So at this point, I'd actually like to turn it over to Kelly. And Kelly will walk us through a little bit of a presentation, again, that was shared previously with the school committee, and then also some of our staff in the buildings on their first professional development day in September, to frame some of our discussion for this evening.
Great. Thanks for having me, and thanks for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your collaboration with us. And I do want to thank the Chelmsford Police Department and Fire, because you've been amazing to work with, and we couldn't do it without you either. So it really is a collaborative effort, and we're all really working together for the safety of our students. So tonight, I just wanted to walk you briefly through the ALICE safety protocol and a little bit about what ALICE is. And like Dr. Lang said, we're going to show you a short video that was actually created this summer by, directed by our Tom Peterson, and has our Chelmsford High School and teachers starring in it. But you might want to ask, what is ALICE? Well, ALICE is actually an acronym, and it stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. And like Chief Spinney was saying, ALICE is really about options-based and being proactive, based on information that you have about any kind of active intruder or aggressive intruder that is in, again, any kind of setting. This isn't just for schools. This is for, you could be, you know, in a mall, it could be at a hospital, it could be in a business. So this is how can we respond to any kind of actor, active intruder situations? And the real premise here is being proactive and not being passive. Because we're all very familiar with the lockdown procedures of the past, and that was, that students were asked, you know, sit quietly in one spot and just wait. Research has shown that that is really not the best tactic to take. So again, we, ALICE provides additional options beyond the traditional lockdown, which we will talk about and you'll see in the video. Not every event is the same. So for example, you might make decisions based on that information, that timely information that you're getting. And that's what's really important. So you're able to take ownership over those decisions and those options that you have based on the situation at hand. ALICE is proven, it's research-based, and it increases odds of survival using these, this protocol. And it's, I just want to point out that ALICE, the protocol, is not sequential. So for example, it's not that you're, you know, going to always alert, lock down, inform, counter, and evacuate. It's situational, and it's options-based. So it's not sequential. And so I just wanted to point that out because it's very important. And why ALICE? Why are we moving to this model? Well, police, they, we all do the best we can, what research will tell us. And police response, no matter how fast, will rarely be quick enough. We look at all of the most recent situations in the news, and of the 160 active shooter events, 60% of the events ended before law enforcement arrived. So we want to equip our staff, our students, our personnel to make sure that they have the information and options that they need to survive. 98% of active intruder events have one perpetrator. Columbine and Jonesboro had two perpetrators who never left each other's side. So this is something that we know. So in general, this is how, historically, how events have come, you know, are, come about. There's generally not more than two people, mostly it's a lone person. And then ALICE is also endorsed by the Department of Homeland Security and the Massachusetts Task Force. Like I said, it's research-based. So Lisa and Greg Crane are the founders of ALICE. And Greg Crane was, he's in law enforcement, and his wife Lisa Crane was in education. And so after Columbine in 2008, they felt very passionate about school safety and came up with the ALICE protocol based on research. So research tells us this, again, is the way to go. So I just, I'm not going to go into too much detail about ALICE because you're going to see it through a nine-minute video that we're going to show in just a few minutes. But I did want to speak to the timeline of what's been taking place. And Dr. Lang and Chief Spinney have alluded to a few of these, a few of these events. But we've, this really has been in the making in Chelmsford Public Schools for over the past year. October 2017, like Dr. Lang said, we formed an ALICE exploration committee, and that's how this all came about. Exactly. So the committee was formed about a year ago. And it was then we realized we needed to train our staff, we needed to train our administrators. And there's what's something called the ALICE Certified Instructor Training. And that's a two-day, very intensive course. So 15 of, or actually 17 of our Chelmsford Public School staff members and 10 members from Chelmsford Police Department and Chelmsford Fire Department came together last April 3rd and 4th. We were actually a host site. So we hosted a little over 60 members from, oh, actually out of state. But we had 60 members in-state, out-of-state that came together at Chelmsford High School and were trained as certified ALICE instructors. And at that point, like I said, that collaboration was very important because during those two days, we were able to work with the Chelmsford Police Department, Chelmsford Fire Department, and really, you know, beginning that dialogue and those conversations about how we were going to move forward together. And then in June through August 2018, over the summer, you know, Chelmsford made a commitment to the ALICE safety protocol and the ALICE model. And ALICE provides an e-learning module for staff members. So it's like a blended learning model where they recommend that staff participate in an online tutorial or online instruction about the ALICE protocol, and they participate in live skills, drills, and scenarios. So the staff, staff were expected, all staff were expected over the summer to participate in the e-learning training. They had to pass four or five modules. They had to print, you know, out a certificate. You have to get an 80% or above to pass. So we, right now, we have a 94% participation rate, completion rate for our e-learning. So we're, that's awesome. So our staff members are knowledgeable about the ALICE protocol and have been through this online component. So it doesn't stop there, because like I said, it's really important that we have that FaceTime with one another. And so September 18th was our first professional development day as a staff. Chelmsford Police Department, Chelmsford Fire Department came together, and we actually ran through drills and scenarios within the schools. So what I love, and I really want to thank you all for coming out, because I think what made a big impact was the fact that we had at least two representatives from Chelmsford Police and/or Fire Department working within our schools during that half-day. So the staff members actually participated in drills, scenarios, practicing barricading, and countering, and evacuating, and enhanced lockdown. So they could actually get a feel for what this was really like and experience that after they had participated in the e-learning module. And so where we're at today is October 2018, community outreach. We think it's really important that we're communicating with you all and that you're involved with what we're, with what we're rolling out, because we need you as well. We're in this together. And so what our plans for next steps is we are going to have continued staff professional development around how are we going to train students and what is this going to look like? And we've realized this has to look different at the different levels. And I'm sure many of you have questions. I see familiar faces from the elementary school, because I understand that developmentally, it's going to look very different, that rollout at the elementary level than it is at the middle or even at the high school. So we're well aware of that, and we plan to, plan accordingly. And then we're also going to be conducting safety drills with our students, which we'll be talking to and informing you about in advance. So you know exactly what's happened, what's happening, and how you can talk to your children about this as well. We, I do have a slide at the end, after questions and answers, if you want to take a photo of. We'll put the PowerPoint up on the website. That's just some links to some parent resources about how to talk to your children about these very delicate conversations and situations, because we realize that students do have, you know, anxiety around these issues. And then the ALICE video. So like I said, Tom Peterson put this video together over the summer with John McGyazek. He was one of the deans at the high school, was integral in making this happen as well. The police department, Dr. Lang, you'll see, are all in the video. We thought it was really important that we took ownership over having a video that represented Chelmsford. And so we would, again, just keep in mind, like I said, this is all, what's developmentally appropriate. The video was created for community outreach. It was created for perhaps a high school audience. This is not something that we would share with an elementary school population. So let me show you, we'll view the video. It's about nine minutes long. We'll open up for questions and answers, and then we have a few additional items we can talk about.
Kelly, if I may, those two balances are malfunctioning, as everyone in the room talks about. I thought it was a Halloween thing.
Right?
They are being fixed next month. Anyway, is this, is this? Actually, for the video, I'll shut them all off. But we kept that going. I could increase these and leave those.
I'm glad it's doing that. Because, let's say, I apologize. I'm a Mac person, and this is really challenging for me today because I'm working off this HP. I got that book. Oh, okay. All right. Here we go. Thank you.
Welcome.
And I'm Jay Lang, Superintendent of Schools in Chelmsford. The Chelmsford Public Schools, along with the Chelmsford Police, are proud to implement the ALICE safety program in our buildings. The ALICE safety program emphasizes an option-based approach during active threat events and other man-made incidents. We are always looking for innovative ways to ensure that children and staff are safe in our school system. The ALICE program takes steps to ensure that this happens.
We have produced a short video to demonstrate some of the protocols that will or have already been instituted. I would like to emphasize that the video is designed to educate, not to frighten viewers. We understand that this is a difficult subject. It may be uneasy to talk about. But the more prepared you are for an event of this magnitude, the more likely you will be able to react in a way that will enhance the safety of our school community when it is needed most.
Both the Chelmsford Police and Chelmsford School officials place the utmost importance on the safety of the students, staff, and all of those that enter into our buildings.
The Chelmsford Public Schools take pride in being a safe place to learn and grow. However, the reality is that it is possible for someone to come into one of our buildings with the intention of causing harm or threatening our students, staff, or visitors. The schools have partnered with the Chelmsford Police Department and work hard every day in an effort to promote a safe working and learning environment. Should the unthinkable happen in a Chelmsford school, it is imperative that we know how to react to help lessen the impact and to help protect ourselves and others. Realizing the recent tragedies regarding school shootings, we strive to prepare ourselves and others to react in a way that will help prevent injuries and save lives. Although highly unlikely, you could be faced with the situation in which an armed aggressor is threatening your safety as well as those around you. Today, we would like to introduce to you a program called ALICE. ALICE is an acronym that stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. The proper implementation of these five steps can help save your life or the lives of others. ALICE seems like a series of steps for you to follow. However, the letters are actually a way for you to remember the important choices you may need to make in order to stay safe. It is also important to know that these are not necessarily sequential steps that need to be followed in a particular order. The decisions you make should be based on your specific situation, should you find yourself in danger. The decisions you make may, and most likely will, be different than decisions being made in another part of the school. You may choose to evacuate, but another group of students may not have that option available to them. They may choose to lock down in the classroom. The important thing is that your only objective is to get out of this situation safely. Let's take a look at the different parts of ALICE. The A stands for alert. Alert refers to the way you learn about the threatening situation and how you communicate the dangers to others. You may see the aggressor. You may hear gunshots, screams, or other loud noises. Someone may tell you. It may be announced using the school's loudspeaker system, or you may receive a phone call or text. It is always okay to contact the Chelmsford Police or 911 with information as they are prepared to handle the overflow calls they may receive during an emergency. Once alerted to the danger, it is time to make some quick decisions, and that is where the other four key points of ALICE can help. The L refers to lockdown. If you choose to lock down, move quickly to an area or room that can be closed off by a door or another barrier. Quickly lock and barricade the door. This may be as simple as removing a safety device that prevents the door from shutting, such as a magnet. It is important to act quickly, because time is always an issue for you and the aggressor. Even though you may be moving and thinking quickly, it is imperative that you do not panic and continue to think clearly. If you're able to stack chairs, desks, tables, and other things against the doorway, the threatening person will likely move to another area instead of wasting time trying to climb over or move the objects in an attempt to get into a specific room. The aggressor's goal is to do as much harm as possible as quickly as possible before the police intervene. Once you have locked and barricaded the door, quickly move to an area out of sight and start formulating a plan on how to respond should the aggressor try to get into your safe area. At this point, you should not open the door for anyone, even if you recognize the voice. You don't know what else could be on the other side of the door. Coordinate your actions. Start gathering several items that you can use to protect yourself. You can use classroom supplies to throw at the aggressor to disorient him or her. A constant barrage of small, hard, heavy objects is key. Communicate the plan with the people around you. Don't wait and hope that they won't enter. Have a plan in place and make sure that everyone in the room knows it. Please know that the police are trained to respond to the threat. The police are not there to care for those injured or to stop and try to get people out of the building. Their mission is just to stop the aggressor from harming others as quickly as possible. The I is for inform. Staying informed is critical in an emergency situation. If you see or hear something that can help the police, someone in your room should immediately call 911 and get the information to the dispatcher. Telling the 911 dispatcher what you have seen or heard and where the aggressor may be located is key to helping the police respond to the threat. Until the police arrive, you are their eyes and ears in the school. Answer any questions that the dispatcher asks you. If you don't know the answer, that is okay. Just being on the line with them is immensely helpful. The C represents counter. If there is no way of keeping the aggressor out of your room or to evacuate to a safer area, you may have to defend yourself. If you decide to counter the aggressor's attack, you may be able to distract or disrupt the aggressor's plan. By taking an offensive stand, you put the aggressor on the defensive and may be even able to disarm or subdue the aggressor until police arrive. Once on the floor, try to separate the weapon from the aggressor, but never pick it up or handle it. You should then have someone dial 911 to update the police of the situation with the aggressor's location. If possible, hold the aggressor's face down on the floor until the police arrive. Once again, do not pick up or handle the weapon, as you may be mistaken as the aggressor. If you are staying in the room, carefully place a trash can or a large object over the weapon and guard it until police arrive. The E is for evacuate. If the person on the floor is still a threat, you may choose to evacuate the room and then the building. If you leave with the weapon, place it in a trash can, box, or other container so that you will not be mistaken by the police as the aggressor as you enter into the hall or exit the building. You should place your hands above your head with your fingers spread when exiting the school to show police that you are not the aggressor. You may also choose to evacuate as soon as you are alerted of a threat and can make an informed decision based on the aggressor's position. If the aggressor is on the other side of the school, this may be your best option. Once out of the school, meet at the nearest reunification point and await further instruction. The ALICE program is designed to help teach students and employees of the Chelmsford Public Schools how to react based on any type of threatening situation. Only confront the aggressor if it is obvious that you are in immediate danger and if there is no other way to lock down or evacuate the area.
Thank you for watching this video. In collaboration with the Chelmsford Public Schools, the Chelmsford Police Department will be implementing the school intruder training for staff and students on campus. Please know that the Chelmsford Police Department and school officials will always do everything in our power to prevent a situation like the ones you saw from arising. We all strive to make Chelmsford a safe place to work, learn, and live. But these protocols are necessary so that we can quickly and effectively respond to a threatening situation. We encourage you to ask any questions you may have to your school. We encourage you to ask any questions you may have to your school administrators or police. We are always looking for innovative ways to keep our students and faculty safe while in the attendance of our school buildings. This Alice program takes massive steps in this direction. Thank you.
I mentioned before that parent resources. So again, how do we talk to our children about safety without making them scared? So I just picked three resources that are recommended by Alice that I've reviewed. One's from PTA. One, it talks about some literature that you can read to your child at home to talk about stranger danger and safety in, again, developmentally appropriate ways. The first link is for more of an elementary population, and then the other two links are for just family resources. If something were to happen, you know, how do you talk about that with your child? And so if you want to take a picture of that, you can take a picture of it, and then we will also post this PowerPoint or the resources to the website as well. And then Dr. Lang was also going to just review some additional safety initiatives that are happening in the district that he wanted to let you know about.
Thank you, Kelly. Yes, before we open it up for kind of community talk, I just wanted to cover a few things with you. So as indicated in the PowerPoint presentation, this is our first opportunity to really reach out to the parents in particular to talk a little bit about some of the new options that we have and some of the new programs that we have in place. And one of the next steps as far as our staff are concerned, our staff was trained at the September Professional Development Day, and between now and the holidays, we'll actually be working on how to roll this out with the kids in the schools. So again, the video you saw earlier is more high school appropriate. It really isn't elementary appropriate. So our elementary-level principals and staff in the buildings will be actually putting together a little video for our elementary school kids to be able to see. I think when the whole staff saw the video with the September Professional Development Day, I think it's nice that everyone gets the same message at the same time. That was very well received. We'd like to be able to have our staff and students in the district at the elementary, middle, and high school level all be able to see a particular video that's relevant to their age group, just so that they all have the same context for what we're talking about. And then again, between now and the holidays, we'll start to roll these scenarios out to the kids in the schools. Also, to kind of guide some of our talk and maybe some of the questions and discussions of this evening, I just wanted to fill you in on a couple of additional steps that we already have in place that we're going to be rolling out through the rest of the school year. And first is, the various Chief Spinney and Chief Ryan indicated earlier, we really share information very well between the schools and the police and the fire, but one of the things that we recently went to the school committee with was a recommendation to kind of digitize and make more electronically available all of our different emergency plans and building maps and layouts for internal purposes, not necessarily to share with the public, but internally, just so that we can actually be a little bit more effective and on the fly sharing information with each other. So we actually are going to be electronically updating all of our emergency management plans into a centralized system that's going to be, again, shared with all first responders in the area. So that is something that we have in place. The company that we're actually contracting with to help us with that is going to be coming in over the next number of weeks between now and Thanksgiving and taking a look at all our emergency plans, comparing them against kind of industry best practice both in Massachusetts and across the country to make sure we're hitting all of the different points we should, helping us update any of our building layouts, creating site maps for our schools in the event, again, there were ever an emergency, so that we can share that information better with responding officers from, say, other towns who might be coming in to help out, so that that information can be shared readily with them. There's an e-learning component within the new software that, again, will be able to internally share with each other, that will track some of our different drills within the schools, whether they be school safety drills or fire drills, bus drills, things along those lines. So I think that's going to be very well received. This particular company who we're contracting with is also is one of the phases of the project going to be coming out and performing a kind of a third-party physical assessment of all of our school properties. So that, again, will be happening in the coming weeks as well. Chief Spinney and I went around last spring when we were doing some of our drills in the schools and actually watched and participated in some of the drills that were happening, and we got a good sense of how our staff and students responded to those drills. But we'd like to now get kind of a third party or another set of eyes on the way that we're operating. So this company is going to come in and do that. So they'll actually walk each of our facilities with us, they'll take a look at our emergency plans, make some recommendations of any kind of changes or enhancements that they might see to both our plans as well as our facilities themselves to just make sure that they are as safe as possible. I believe Chief Spinney also talked earlier about some of the investment we've made in the camera infrastructure within the schools, and that is something that over the years we have invested a significant amount of resources in and will continue to in the years to come. At our high school, again, internally, we have probably close to 80 to 100 cameras within the building, so we really get great footage of what's happening within that school. At our elementary and middle schools, we didn't have the network capacity to really be able to add the IP-based cameras significantly throughout those buildings previously. Over the course of this past summer and fall, we've upgraded all of our computer networks within the elementary and the middle schools, so now we can actually expand the camera access within the elementary and the middle schools. In the elementary and middle schools right now, we have cameras only in the main lobby. So when you come into the building, basically the main door and the hallways are covered on camera, but we don't have other inner areas of the building. So now with the enhanced computer network, we'll be able to start to add cameras, and you'll actually see that be aligned in the Town's Capital Plan moving forward. That's something that we're working on. On the exterior of the buildings, we do have very good coverage of all of our exterior cameras in the schools. And not only can we monitor and see them at the school department, but again, in the dispatch center, our dispatchers in town can pull up any of our cameras at any time if there ever was an issue and be able to see what's going on. I can monitor them from my office if there were ever something happening in the school. School principals can pull them up on their computer to their particular schools if they had any kind of issues going on in their building. So access and being able to share that information has really come a long way in Chelmsford, and it's something we're certainly going to continue with. So I just wanted to touch base on those few enhancements that we kind of have in the works already. That'll all be being rolled out over the course of this past year. Want to thank Kelly again and our other first responders here this evening for being able to kind of share that information with you and hope at this point to have a little dialogue and maybe answer some questions, concerns that you may have about safety planning either district-wide or within individual schools. The only thing that's going to be a little bit difficult, so I'm going to recommend just so that anyone can have an opportunity to ask anything that they want, but we want to make sure that we actually have the response on camera so that people at home viewing, whether it's live or later on, can actually hear the questioning. So we don't have a microphone at your desk. If anyone is actually going to ask a question, we're just going to repeat the question so that it's actually on the mic so that people at home can hear what's happening. If anyone also has a specific question or dialogue that they'd like to have, you're welcome to come down to the front table. There are two mics set up at the table so that you could actually kind of have a free-flowing conversation back and forth with ourselves, anyone from police, fire, the school committee as well, you know, any of our school administrators, welcome to jump in and answer questions and talk if you'd like. But that's going to be our options. Either stay at your seats, which you're welcome to do, and we'll just repeat the question, or if you feel it's going to be a back-and-forth dialogue, it might be better to come sit up front, and that way we won't have to keep repeating everything. But love to open it up at this point for any kind of questions, concerns you may have, and we'll try to direct them to the appropriate person for a response for you. Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay. Is the Alice training for the faculty going to be a recurring topic on a daily basis?
No, it's going to be ongoing. So over the course of this past year, as Kelly indicated, about 30 administrators in police and fire within the district were actually certified as instructors. So those will be kind of our district professionals that will continue to do the rollout with staff. We had an e-learning component where staff over the course of the summer before the Professional Development Day went online to kind of acclimate themselves with the different protocols, and then we dedicated that first Professional Development Day in September to the actual training. Between now and Christmas, between a combination of additional PD days and staff meetings, there will be time dedicated toward the continued rollout of the program. It will become second nature, almost like a fire drill is within the schools, but it's going to be something that on an annual basis, almost like other kind of staff sign-offs or reviews that we do, will do an update to security plans and Alice response protocols. If there are any different changes to options or whatnot, we'll certainly update them on an annual basis, and then staff will technically review them and sign off on them.
Is there any future plan to add kind of a full-time security personnel within the school infrastructure, maybe auditing and making sure separate buildings instead of having someone doing it part-time, actually starting a job?
We're not letting Kelly off the hook. No, Kelly honestly has, Kelly has done a wonderful job, and I think as a district, we all kind of share in the responsibility for making sure that the schools are as safe as they possibly can be. There was a team of administrators who really kind of put this together and has put a lot of thought into this. I think working with the police department, as Chief Spinney indicated, we actually were able to add a school resource officer this year, so we have another dedicated law enforcement official who split between the two, Dan said this evening, split between the two middle schools. That's been very effective. So we really have a team that's working on this, and I think we'd never want it to just be one person's responsibility in the district. If it ever got to the point where we felt like we were stretched too thin, we certainly would allocate or ask for additional resources. But I think actually bringing together school administrators and police and fire and getting all the heads in the room at the same time, it actually is quite an experience because you get a good cross-representation of people's reactions to how they would actually see things from a school standpoint or a police or a fire. So that's been working actually pretty well for us.
And our committee continues to meet, like on a bi-monthly basis. So for example, we have a meeting next Tuesday, and we'll all come together, the Alice Exploration Committee, to plan for next steps. So we continue our, you know, to meet, to plan.
I know Chief Spinney, just wanted to jump in.
Yeah, I've talked to the town manager at length with my goals and my hopes for this community. I want a third SRO. I'd like to have it by next year. The issue for me right now is personnel. I do not have an available officer to pull off of the Patrol Division to put into the school system. I'd like to do that by next year so both middle schools would have a complete dedicated full-time school resource officer. As things stand now, the elementary schools have a liaison system, and what I mean by that is, I have an officer assigned to all the elementaries to be that contact person. It's much more, it's much more important when you deal with, it's much more effective, I should say, when you deal with the same person. So when one of the principals has an issue, they know to reach out to Officer Brian Uble. He knows the personnel, he knows the students. That will continue. I also encourage the patrol sectors every day to pay a visit to the schools in their sector. So I'm sure your kids have probably told you, it's nothing, we've been doing this now going on three years, I believe, every day I expect the patrol officers to get out of their cruises, enter the schools, and walk around and interact with the students. And that accomplishes a lot of things. First of all, it accomplishes the students feeling comfortable with the officers, which is what we want, and it accomplishes dialogue, and it accomplishes the fact that the officers learn the schools. I have some officers that are not from Chelmsford, so we've encouraged all of them to learn the schools inside note in case, you know, God forbid, there was some type of emergency situation, they're familiar with the building. So we're going to continue to build on the program. I feel very confident we're going to get that third one. And like Dr. Lang said, we're going to continue to build on the camera system, the other protocols in town, and I think we're on a good path.
You know what I might do, if you don't mind, just to get some different kind of voices up to the table. I know I'm calling you out here, but with the principals that are in the room, would you mind maybe shifting up front? Molly, Diana, Steve, and Jeff? And we'll just, you guys know certainly where you are, but we'll just add another chair in here. That way, when the audience is asking dialogue, we've got principals from each different grade level represented in the building, and they can actually talk specifically about how things might affect within their particular buildings. Steve Murray got all dressed up for tonight, so we really appreciate him doing that. Now, he was at a sporting event earlier tonight, so we'd much rather have him in sporting attire than not at all. We'll go to that side of the room, then I won't forget about you. We'll come back. Go ahead.
When you started your video, it had said that an alert would be done if the loudspeaker were possibly turned off or checked, and in the video they required you to use cellphones. I don't currently have a car lease, I'm not sure how to do that. So who is all cellphone-based to be off in the morning all day? Which is disconcerting as a parent, so now none of my three kids have access to the outside world in the unfortunate that something does happen. Are you going to possibly look to reassess that rule where you still have to be off, but maybe they're allowed to carry them with them, or there's a bucket in each classroom where they can drop off from beginning to end? So that they do have the opportunity to call 911 or to call their parents and get some insurance from that, or in the most unforeseen circumstances, be able to take that?
So the question, I'm going to just try to repeat is, cut it down a little bit. So the question became, during the video, there were some kids that were actually on their cellphones either calling 911 or alerting authorities to what was going on in the buildings. And right now, at our, certainly at our elementary levels, kids typically don't have cellphones. At our middle school level, some kids do have cellphones, but it's the general practice that they're not carried with them during the school day, that they're locked in a locker or something along those lines. Jeff, is that something maybe you can talk a little bit about at the middle school level?
Sure. Great question, and it's something that we are looking at. We certainly don't want to get to a point where, I'm not exactly sure how it works at the high school, but, you know, we don't want kids using them freely throughout the course of the day. But in these type of situations, it is something that we're looking at after the training, after talking to some staff members. One of the things that we're going to be doing is working with all teachers on their ability to access the overhead announcements in the event of an extreme emergency. So somebody might be able to notify from any room depending on, you know, who sees the event first. So that's something that we're looking at, in addition to potentially letting the students keep them. But all of that will come with a lot of discussion and a lot of training as far as what exactly those things could be used for. And for now, we want to hold with our middle school students especially that, you know, extreme emergencies only. But we're not at that point yet, but perhaps by the time we get to rolling, I'm sorry, by the time we get to rolling this out with the kids, that'll be something that we will have decided, because I want to have the answer before the students ask it. And that's something I'll work with Principal McPhee on, because I think we need to be on the same page with that.
A lot of these questions, they're very good questions that are going to come up, and this is our first time as a district kind of going through these options-based scenarios as well. So we traditionally in the past had just the hard lockdown was the response for the district, but as we roll out these options, obviously, the first time staff and students are going through some of these things, some of these questions are going to come up. So what we'll do is actually keep kind of a running list of some of the different topics that come up tonight. As a district, we might produce kind of an FAQ-type document that can be shared with parents now and in the future, just around some of these different areas as things get changed as they roll out. But thank you for the question. Back right?
People were presenting that research shows that the Alice is the right methodology. Is there any other questions worth doing?
Yes, so the question from the audience was that during the PowerPoint presentation, one of the slides showed that Alice was, it's certainly an options-based response protocol that was research-based. Is there evidence to show that that's actually an effective tool?
Yes. So Columbine, Jonesboro, do you want to speak to it? The more about police, sure.
Lieutenant, yeah, you got to come to a mic. It's just that the viewing audience at home can't watch us. Yeah, either of those.
Mic on? So we do some presentations, not only in the schools, but we'll go around to some of the businesses and churches and things and the like. And one of the things we talk about is, this has been obviously an ongoing problem since before Columbine, but Columbine was kind of the big flashpoint that got people thinking about this. Clearly, the Alice program was developed sort of as a result of this. Alice is not alone. There are other, you know, programs, Run a Height Fight, things like that. The Virginia Tech situation was a shooting where somebody had gone and murdered somebody earlier in the day. Virginia Tech is a community that's similar in size to Chelmsford, obviously a college campus, a little different demographically. They had murdered somebody earlier in the day. A lot of the resources from the Virginia Tech community were addressing that situation. If that happened in Chelmsford, you'd have a situation where the vast majority of our resources would be focused on that. While the resources were addressing that situation... resources would be focused on that. While the resources were addressing that situation, the shooter went across campus to a hall, Norris Hall, two-story building, several classrooms on the second floor. And what they did was, he, he actually barricaded the doors with chains on the bottom floor to prevent quick response from first responders. Went upstairs and went from room to room systematically trying to kill people. In the first room, he shot, I think it was 95% of the people, probably about 85% of those people perished. And essentially, the second room was similar casualty rates. But the third, fourth, fifth room, as you go, as you, as you went down, it went lower and lower. Now part of that is because the first room is caught by surprise. But as you go on, people took measures to escape. They, they barricaded doors. They barricaded, the last room, he didn't get in. They barricaded humanly, human barricade against the door. He didn't get in. So what did he do? He went back to the other rooms that were less secure and shot people again. There was, there was a room, I think we believe is the third room, where the professor got in the way and tried to counter. As he was doing that, slowing down the attack, people were jumping out the second-story window, evacuating. Now, none of this is pretty. Some really bad things happened at Virginia Tech, particularly in the first couple of rooms. But what they found was, as people countered, as people tried to evacuate, as people barricaded, there were obviously much better results than in those first couple of rooms where they were caught by surprise. They really didn't counter. They kind of sat at their desks and they were, you know, pretty much easy prey. So that was kind of target hardening. So all of these things have been, these, these protocols are developed based on what, what we know. And there have been other ones that have been interrupted by the police. People have slowed things down in the schools and then the police were able to take action. But, but that's essentially what it is. It, it's much better, you know, in, in doing with the, training with the schools, the schools have embraced this tremendously. And I know in the staff training, if you've gone through this training, you, you kind of, it becomes immediately apparent after the first exercise or so, how woefully inadequate given what we're facing today, the traditional lockdown system is. So that's kind of where we're at. That's why they're moving to that thing. And it's not, it's not, it's not a fine line. You, you go from being kind of back in the stone age to state-of-the-art, right? It's either, it's almost one or the other, based on where you end up.
And I think the research would, would indicate, I mean, Alice is certainly the, the method that we've chosen and the program that we've chosen. As Dana indicated, there were several of them. The research is really based around the options-based response. So whichever one of the different programs you subscribe to, the fact that you're actually just not locking down and that you're actually considering, you know, evacuation counters, things along those lines, that's where the research suggests that, yes, there will actually be a less, lesser casualties.
Did anyone discuss what kind of liability that puts on the individual teacher versus, say, this protocol, we lock down, everybody does the same thing, now you've got individuals in a stressful situation making those decisions? And what kind of liability that puts on the individual person?
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, when you talk about like a, like a personal liability point, or are you talking about like the stress of the, the situation?
Personal liability, insurance placing through, mitigation after the pact?
I tell you, from my standpoint, and again, just here in my previous district, that has never even come into the equation. If you're in a, an actual situation where you're in like an active shooter situation, that teacher in the classroom, who was responsible really for the 20, 25 students under their particular care, no one is going to question that they didn't do the very best that they could to help the students out in that, that mind frame. I know of no lawsuits that have come from any of these different responses in school systems, as terrible as some of the casualties have been. I think if, if anything, actually allowing the teacher the option. And again, from going through some of these drills on your own, when you're actually in them and we were even doing the instructor training that day, you are really kind of a sitting duck in the room where you're just doing the traditional lockdown. It's easy because you don't have to think of anything other than just lock your door and just, you know, sit quietly with the kids. But God forbid the shooter actually came to that particular room, you have no recourse. So from a casualty standpoint also, when you have some of these options in play, you're, you're far better off personally. And I think, you know, as far as minimizing casualties as well, you're in a far better situation. But I would personally never question a teacher's judgment that they make because again, you have to take into consideration the information that's being shared with you at that particular time. You know, where is the shooter? Are they close? You know, what kind of kids do I have? You know, are these high school kids? It might, you know, be a little bit easier to maneuver 20 kids out of class and evacuate's the way to go. Is this a situation where it's elementary kids or, you know, K1 would be a lot more difficult to move 20 kids down the hall? It might be safer to actually lock down. So the, the questioning of the teacher would never come into play. They have, they know their kids, they know their population. I've never heard of a liability issue from any of the previous things that have come up in the past. Far back.
So you mentioned a little bit about the options-based protocol having a component that is lockdown, so there is still that option. And one of the things you've addressed here is your third-party assessment of the facilities and things. Will you be continuing to do improvements both between now and when that assessment is complete? For instance, in McCarthy, a lot of the doors open outward, which is, makes it kind of difficult to barricade. I mean, you can certainly barricade to slow entry, but the, you know, I'm just wondering if there are other measures you already have in place for some of the more obvious or possibly challenging facilities adjustments?
Yeah. So the question from the audience was, while we're waiting for the third-party assessment, are we still taking into consideration other kind of strengthening or hardening of the facilities that, that come up in our reviews? I would say yes. We're not waiting necessarily for the assessment, but at the same time, it's nice to get a third party's eyes on the way that we're actually doing things. There are actually advantages to doors that push out as opposed to pushing in. As far as an intruder from the hallway, it's actually harder to get in to the room. There are myriad of different things that we're looking at. So nothing is stopping us from doing those known things that we have talked about, known about. But I think this assessment will actually be helpful to again, just have a, another set of eyes on the way that we're doing things, looking at our facilities because if you're in the facility every day, sometimes things might not jump out to you the same they would to someone else. And having the experts come in, and again, this is timely because it's going to take place between now and really Thanksgiving. So it's over the next month or so that this will be happening. Some of the, I envision, some of the recommendations will be quick and we can act on immediately. Others might be more substantial and will actually require some capital investments and some physical construction-type projects. So some might be a little bit more in the works. But we'll certainly work with our school staff and our law enforcement and first responders to make sure everyone knows what the plan is. Teresa?
And you talked about increased security and enhanced control, cameras and other things like that. For a lot of us, the entrance ways are a deep concern. In particular, McCarthy, when someone enters there, there's no eyes on that person until they hopefully go to the office. And obviously if they're an intruder with sense, they, they won't. I know we've been talking on an office block for a couple of years and we know that there's fire panels in between the office and the, like the lobby wedge. So it makes it hard to put a window there. But as you guys are talking about this, what progress has been made in that room? I think we're kind of hoping that the resource officer at these stations a little closer there and what we realized, Fort Corrin is a great place for them. There's still no eyes at the entrance way. So if a person came in that way, you know, they could be anywhere before we realize.
Right. And McCarthy is unique with the fact that there is no window. But if you think about even some of our other schools, you, once you have access through the main door, like say you're by, you're Harrington, some of the other elementary schools, you are technically in the building. So we have to look at kind of strengthening perhaps all of those, those entryways. But it's not going to be kind of a quick fix as far as just having the school resource officer, office to be located there. Because again, as it stands now, like Dana, split between a couple of different buildings. And we don't want to necessarily have the school resource officer just be sitting at the door checking people in and out. We want them interacting in classrooms and, you know, caf and lunchroom and things like that. McCarthy does present some significant challenges because that left wall, when you come in, it's really, it's not feasible to put any kind of a, a window to the office. So there are all the electrical panels to the whole school run right there on that wall. They really can't be moved. Right behind that is the elevator wall. You can't move the elevator either. So that probably is going to take one of two things. And this is what we're actually looking for that, the third party to help us with. Is it building out some kind of a, a different, like a second entryway? So you come in from the main door and you're somewhat corralled before you can get into the main building. Or, you know, might even be relocating one of the reception, one of the secretaries or receptionists up to the lobby so that they're actually seeing people when they come into the building. Personally, I, I don't think that's a good use of resources as far as having the school resource officer sit there. That would be more of a school staffing-type model, the same way it is in every other school.
Yeah, I agree.
Right. And I think we're just trying to figure out exactly what that something is. But it, it is being worked on. It's, it's noted.
I have a high school and the video of high school was shown. My question is, do the high school students wait for the others in the class? The teacher to tell them what to do? Do they do things on their own? Will it always be the others telling them to do? We are evacuating, we are hiking. How those things work?
Yeah. So the question from the audience, and then I'll ask Steve to actually maybe respond to this, just to get some more panel interaction here. The question from the audience was if you have a high school child and there's a particular incident at the high school, who makes the decision about what to do in the classroom? Is it individual students or is it the teacher who kind of dictates what the, how the class responds? Is that something you would be comfortable addressing?
Sure. So to our training we did in September, one of these is our, the classroom teacher or the adult in that classroom is the one who's, who's in charge. And when they hear the announcement telling what the situation is, they'll make the best assessment at that time. And so although nothing's perfect, that's, that's what we're doing. We're an adult first to disseminate the information to the kids and then working together for the right solution.
So going back more to the elementary level, I have a few friends who are teachers who have gone through the Alice training. They're not here in Chelmsford. But one of the things that they brought up is they'll make the assessment of evacuate or not. How is that looking for kindergarten? Because as they told me, is they said that they would evacuate and tell the children to just run. And I'm like, on an elementary level, especially kindergarten, first grade, what is that looking like? Are they more likely to lock down or?
So the question is, and then I'll turn it over to the elementary principals. The question is at the elementary level in particular, particularly with some of our youngest students, I would say kindergarten, first grade students, what happens when the teacher makes the decision to evacuate? How does that look as far as, you know, I assume being orderly, you know, or whatnot. But would Diana or Molly want to jump in on that one?
Yes, I'm coming from, I'm Diana, principal at Center School, and I'm coming from Groton Dunstable, where we have been using Alice for a couple of years. So I've had an opportunity to see our elementary students practice the drills. I have to say first that I haven't seen any kids alarmed or scared when we've done them. I think the adults had practiced them so frequently that they were very comfortable and the students tend to feed off how the adult is. But they evacuated more often not than not, even in kindergarten and first grade. What we've explained to staff, and I think it's really hard, especially at the element, well, at all levels, we, we're in education, we like our structure. And Alice is not about structure, it's about creating a distraction in order to keep kids safe. So the teachers did tell the kids, this is not a time where you walk out orderly. This is a time to get out of the building as quickly as possible. We did practice with them. They knew exactly where we were going to go and where we were going to meet and always to listen to the teacher. But they didn't have to be quiet. They didn't have to walk. They do, we did want them to run and get out of the building as quickly as possible. In drills, we didn't do that. But I didn't see kindergarten or first grade, the age didn't matter. If, depending on the information they had, if it was safer to get out of the building, they got out of the building. And like I said, it, it went very smoothly. I was really shocked. I think people were really concerned about how the kids would react. And we didn't see any fear or they really went, you know, it was a, a drill like we've practiced at their drills, like fire drills. And staff were comfortable, so they were comfortable with it as well.
Molly, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that it's situationally based. So for example, some of our youngest classrooms in my building are close to exit doors. So they actually have doors out of their classrooms just by model. So again, it's all situationally based. You can't make that decision until you know the information that's given to you. But that's why we're kind of trying to drill the staff in both ways so that they feel comfortable. And obviously too, in terms of the enhanced lockdown, you know, there is a, a worry in terms of, you saw in the video, high school kids can help. But we did talk quite a bit about some options within elementary classrooms that would be easy for an adult to do without, you know, too much support as well. So they'll be practicing that so that they have that option as well.
Am I understanding correctly that the students haven't practiced the Alice yet?
Yeah. So the question, the question from the audience is, have the students actually practiced the Alice responses yet? Are the options-based responses? And the answer is no, not yet.
Was the protocol an event like this where aftermath notifying parents, especially at the elementary school age where they're not going to be able to themselves notify their parents?
Oh, how does the, okay, so the question is...
How would I find out as a parent?
Okay. So the question is, in the event, particularly at the elementary school level, where they wouldn't be able to notify parents on their own, how does the district intend to notify parents that there's an issue with their school or that some type of parent response is necessary? Do you want me to take this one? Does anyone else want to? Okay, no one's jumping up, so I'll, I'll take this one. So what would end up happening, particularly say at an elementary school level, is the first priority is really just safety on the scene. So as soon as, you know, kids are either moved to their reunification site, their rally point, so that they're off-site and away and they're safe. Through our Connect Ed system, an email would be, an email or phone call, an emergency alert would be sent to the parents, basically indicating, you know, there's been a situation at X school. You know, children have been moved to X site. That's what we're going to use for the particular rally or reunification site for that particular event and, you know, to please come to that particular school to pick up your child. We will work internally, even, we'll, we'll probably do some tabletop drills within the schools. We won't actually do that kind of a drill with all the parents, just for the mass confusion it would cost, cause. But we'll actually do that and maybe put out some mock information for parents to just give them a sense of, you know, what would actually happen in that type of a situation? Who would they expect to hear from? What would the timeliness be in the, in the notification to parents? What can they expect if they actually, when they come to the reunification site to actually pick up their child? What type of documentation would they need to provide? Things along those lines. But technically, you would not. And one of the worst things you can actually do is just try to go to the school. Because if, in an emergency situation at the school, if you now have hundreds of parent cars converging on the site and police and first responders are really trying to deal with the issue at hand, that just kind of muddies up the waters. And I think in some of the live situations that have happened in other districts, you will hear horror stories about cars that, you know, were kind of in a row, a mile down the road trying to make their way to the school. It just becomes crazy for first responders to try to actually handle the situation. So the kids would be moved to the reunification site, moved, you know, far away from the, kind of the danger zone. And then you'd be contacted to come and pick up your, your child.
Did you review options like bulletproof doors, bulletproof lockets, insoles, or any self-defense mechanism for the kids, for the teachers?
This question from the audience was, do we have any type of bulletproof windows, doors, things like that to provide extra protection from the, for, for the particular students and staff within the buildings? I can talk and then anyone can jump in if you want to. We don't currently have bulletproof doors or things along those lines. We obviously look to within the schools, provide the, you know, locking mechanisms on all of our classroom doors. Through Town Capital, we've actually gone through a lot of the schools, replaced hardware, made sure doors are working properly, you know, lock and whatnot. But we don't, we don't have, and I don't, I honestly don't know of a school that does have bulletproof, you know, windows and doors and things along those, those lines. I know that there are actually a couple of cases where there was some issue with glass almost being either too dark or bulletproof. It's difficult for responding offices from the outside to be able to gain access in that kind of a situation. I don't know if you would have anything specific on that.
No, not, not necessarily, Jay. But I think, I think you're right on there that I, I think this is something where you're looking to change protocols first. And all of this is great. You're going to have questions, you're going to have concerns. This is a dynamic protocol.
Right.
It's not perfect. You're not going to have all the answers. You have to go with the best information and the best option available at that time. That's what it's all about. It's not meant to be perfect, it's meant to be better. You may still have some casualties or whatever. You, it's going to increase your chance at survivability. That's what we're trying to do. Some of those things, even bulletproof vests or what, you know, glass, stuff like that, that's what comes up now. what comes up now, and then you talk about it when you're in a, you know, a subcommittee or whatever, and you're trying to target hardened. If that seems to be something feasible, then you, maybe you address it.
Go ahead.
This is sort of a step back from Alice, but, I mean, this is the shooter situation that's been going on for so long. My girlfriend, one of my close friends, it happened to her when she was in kindergarten thirty, four years ago in Chicago or in Illinois. And she was in kindergarten and someone came in and shot up the school and her brother was in the classroom and the kids died, and she was in second grade. And I guess my question is more as a step back from Alice, like, do we have, I know we've instituted school psychologists and counselors at the elementary, I don't know what's happens at the middle school and high school level, but the communication with the resource officers and the police, like, do we have red flags? Because a lot of times, like, for kids that are doing this, there is, there are red flags that are happening. And are we communicating with the police? Is everyone aware of that sort of thing?
Sure. I'm going to just try to summarize this a little bit for the TV audience. So the question was, what type of communication do we have in place now between police and fire and schools to share information about, say, students who we might think would need a services or who might be at risk for something? I would say, and then anyone else can jump in if they want to, we actually probably share more information now than we ever have with police and fire and chief can talk as well. Our school staffs, you know, obviously have administrative teams with principals and assistant principals and school guidance counselors and social workers, not social workers, psychologists that meet regularly and talk about, you know, students who might be in crisis or students who might need extra supports. That information, obviously if there's a threat type situation, is shared regularly with the, with the police departments so the services can be provided. I think we're really on top of that for our own students. I think the risk comes in when you're talking about non-Chelsea Public School students, if someone from the outside were just to come in. That's something that we don't, obviously is an external threat that we wouldn't have data on. But when it comes to like information, Chief, can you touch on that?
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. That's been a top priority for us the last couple of years. Our high school's school resource officer, Detective Becky Tyros, is part of the equation with mental health issues with the student. And she's completely confidential and she's part of the conversation. And we have had things come up across the district where a student has acted or said something odd about maybe something that's going on at their family or in their life. And Superintendent and I, or member of my command staff, are on the phone that day. And we always err heavy on the side of caution, obviously, to make sure that the family of that student is getting the resources they need. But to answer the question, we are part of the conversation on the outset immediately. And we address it immediately with the school district. And I think we've put a great plan together the last couple of years where that's probably been one of the biggest enhancements as opposed to just the officer being in the school. Well, now she's part of the conversation. And we've seen results as far as immediate action being taken, whether it's just to address a family crisis or whatnot. So I think it's been very effective.
Just to touch for a second too, I know our principals kind of tested this particularly more at the secondary level, but as much, we do, we certainly talk about kind of hardening the schools and whatever safety procedures and protocols we can put in place to make them as safe, you know, physically and structurally as they possibly can be. Our greatest resource within the buildings is really our students sharing information with us. I know, and Alice has actually talked about this, being the high school principal in the past, Jeff and Steve, anytime our kids feel that there's any kind of threat or any kind of issues going on with the schools, they feel very safe to talk to their teachers, to talk to their principals. And we are really ahead of the curve as far as kind of knowing and being able to predict if something's going to happen based on that information sharing. I don't know if Jeff and Steve want to talk about that for a second? Just about how that is actually just as important, those kind of soft responses to some of the hardened responses.
I agree with that completely. Students will share information if they're concerned about another student. One area that they've been particularly helpful is kids who are sharing things online, maybe posting pictures, comments, things like that. We've been so fortunate that our students at the school feel comfortable sharing that with us and parents as well. So that's, you know, a lot of the time where we get our information from is students who recognize something and have the confidence to share it with us because they know it just isn't right.
Steve?
Same thing. We also, in addition to that, at secondary level, we meet monthly with assistant district attorney's office, with one of their lawyers, probation, the police, to kind of go over the things we want, we want to talk about, discuss more, bring some enrichment activities or things we want to focus on that are the problems. So, and then, that's monthly, and then additionally, weekly with our resource officer, Detective Tyros, and our monthly meetings as administrators, and it's, it makes a big difference. That's good.
But our kids are a super resource to just share that information. So that is something that I think is different in this district than I've seen in other districts.
So just on that, are you promoting that to the kids, that they should report that? I know you're saying that they have good relationships with the teachers, and that's great.
Sure.
Are you actively promoting that, so they can say it?
Oh, I think so. I think you would see that within our buildings, and I think our kids feel very comfortable talking to their, you know, classroom teachers or, you know, other teachers within the building if there are issues. They bring it forward. They're, I think they're kind of the watch guard to almost kind of know what's going on or if something just doesn't seem right. Our history here has been that those kids will actually come forward and say something. That's a, it's a huge resource for us is the kids who really have a field and kind of get a sense for what's happening. But no, we openly and actively encourage that.
My other question was around social media. Do we do anything actively to watch it or is it more reliant on the kids being-
Sure. And I forgot to ask, because TV doesn't know what the question was. So on the second question was, does the district do anything proactively to kind of monitor social media and to be able to respond to things online? I will say from my perspective, social media is just so difficult to manage, to keep track of, particularly within different groups. And the principals can speak otherwise, social media is something that, aside from us putting information out, when it comes to student issues, it oftentimes is a reaction to what is on social media. We're not watching social media sites, we're not part of the, the kids don't invite us into their groups if they're talking and sharing information or whatnot. So that, I mean, that is an issue. So that piece is a little bit reactive, but again, we do rely heavily on kids coming forward if they ever see something that just doesn't seem right. And I really do have to say they do that. Steve, I would think, I mean, that is an issue, it's even creeping into the elementary schools as far as social media and just, you know, kids doing things kind of inappropriately online that ends up coming into the, into the school day, that ends up being an issue that the schools have to deal with.
No, it's frustrating. We talk at the beginning of the year to all our grades, we tell kids, don't be a bystander, be an upstander, get involved, say something, and then we go into about the dangers of social media. So we'll keep saying, we'll keep doing it and we'll keep doing it, but that is, it is a problem. And it's a whole world in there that, Dr. Lang said, they don't invite us into that. So I feel offended. So what's going on?
Dennis?
Can you just address how, what kind of plans are in place for our special education students in terms of this whole program?
Sure. So the question was, special populations within our buildings, particularly say special education students at all grade levels, elementary, middle and high school, do we have any kind of special plans and considerations for how we'll incorporate them into the Alice training? Would any of you like to take a crack at it?
Yeah, just being, you know, sensitive to different needs, much like we do with, with, you know, fire drill or any of our other emergency response protocols, just working closely with the teachers, understanding what it is that the students need, what might, what they might react negatively to, and just sharing information with them to making sure that they know what is coming. And, you know, really, at least from my perspective, we work to eliminate surprises for those students and make sure that they're fully aware of what's coming up, when we're doing it, why we're doing it, and allowing them to be, have the opportunity to ask questions before we get into, you know, any type of formal training.
And we, at our next exploration meeting next week, we'll be talking about training for our special populations. Because with the e-learning component that we have, there are actually modules for special education students, cafeteria workers, et cetera. So that's kind of like the next tier that we'll be looking into, just to make sure that our special educators and general educators are aware of the different strategies that can be used for different populations.
And the only thing I, what's that?
Like, do you run any process?
So the parent resources, the slide that I shared tonight would be a good start just to preview, to see about how to talk to your students about, you know, intruder situations at school and school safety protocols. We'll also be communicating with parents before our safety drills. So that's a good opportunity, once you receive that communication, to be talking to your students or your children about that as well. Just, you know, having that conversation is important.
One thing I just want to follow up on Dennis's point with, in spite of that new electronic kind of information, the emergency plans and documents review and whatnot, there is a way within that new system to be able to kind of code, in particular, especially at classrooms, if you have a population, that's going to be very difficult for them to evacuate because of a physical disability. Where that classroom might be more likely to lock down even if, you know, there was an opportunity to evacuate. So we are going to be able to actually code those particular classrooms within our emergency plan documents and our building maps, so that first responders would know if there's a particular issue within a school, that particular classroom is going to be coded, that it's a special ed classroom that's most likely going to have to lock down. So you, first responders would know that there's going to be people in that particular room that they're going to have to respond to, you know, sooner rather than later, that that particular classroom probably would not be evacuating. So that will be good information we'll be able to share as part of that new initiative. Right now, within the buildings, we have those kind of rooms mapped, but responding officers, say, in particular from another town, wouldn't know that. But we'll now be able to kind of share that going forward. So I think that is a nice enhancement. Go ahead.
I guess more for Chief Spina, Lieutenant Riley, do you have any concerns of showing up to a school, both kids running everywhere as opposed to clear hallways where you can go? And are you doing any close quarters facility training with your police force?
So I'll answer the second part first.
You just have to repeat the question.
I'm sorry. So are we concerned about the chaotic scene, obviously with officers arriving as opposed to an empty hallway? And then part two was, are we doing training with regards to firearm control in a crowded situation? More or less, is that it? So the second part first, yes. Training over the last probably five years, long before we decided to go to Alice protocols, the police department has been training and drilling in active threat scenarios, whether it's a school or an office building or a church or a town hall or et cetera. And part of that training has involved active participants being in the area, innocent people being in the area running chaotically as they would in the real situation. So it's all about firearm safety and target acquisition and neutralizing threat. So I don't think that would be a significant factor. We, the officers every day are out on the street with people moving around, and any potential issue could happen out in a public way or in a public building where there'd be a lot of people potentially in the way. So they're trained for that. Like Chief Ryan said earlier, we've begun training with the fire department, hand in hand with the fire department as we make these penetrations into the buildings. So the officers are well versed at this. As far as, I think I answered both parts of the question, actually. They're well trained in dealing with people all over the place, trying to neutralize the target. And they're also trained with obviously firearm safety as people are in the area.
I appreciate it too, Chief. The kind of the drills that you did last April, school vacation within the school facility, I don't know if you want to touch on that.
Yeah, so this was-
That was a nice-
This was the first time ever for us. Like Lieutenant Hearn said earlier, we've been drilling in other parts of town for years now, and we just did a large town hall safety drill last year. And we did a full-scale drill at Lockheed Martin with their participation involving the fire department, police department, Trinity ambulance, greater Lowell EMS, participants from Lockheed Martin pretending to be injured, fleeing the area. It was a full-scale drill. It was as real as it could be to let us all get better. The school committee, Dr. Lang and Principal Parks were nice enough to let us use the Parker school. Nothing is more realistic than being in the building for the training. Nothing can simulate that better than being there. So during one of the school breaks, school week, school week off, we used the Parker and simulated an active threat. We had actors, we had people participating, pretending to be injured, the fire department hand in hand with us in a collaborative effort, rescue task force. They practiced their skills. The goal now is to remove injured in the warm zone while the threat is being neutralized in a hot zone. And we're going to continue to do that, probably on, at the least, an annual basis. And we're going to continue to improve on that. So I've been really impressed with the last year or so with the collaboration between us, the fire and really the whole town.
You want? Go ahead.
May I ask one more question? It would probably be more to you, is, has there ever been any thought, I was a first responder up in New Hampshire, and I know up around some of the schools or some of near, because it was college campus, some of the community members could become first responders that would kind of be there very quickly, probably to help? Not as enforcement, but almost like another person for the area to help out that would probably be there very quickly.
I'm not saying that could never work.
You have to repeat the question.
Oh, with the, with the ability for a helpful citizen show up on scene to provide additional assistance, something that effective. I don't want to ever say no to that, but you could have a point where this person might not have, know what we're going to do. So we train with the fire department for the very reason that we all know each other's mission, each other's job, and to get the outcome we want. My concern would be if someone kind of deployed themselves, there'd be that, it would add to the chaotic factor. And it's going to be chaotic.
We have to attend to this town.
Right. I think a coordinated effort certainly couldn't hurt. Again, though, if there's a threat that's active, I don't know if I'd want additional unarmed civilians flooding the scene. As it is now, additional resources are required for us to pair up with the fire department. But go ahead, Chief Ryan.
I was going to say, if I could, this drill that we did in April was the first opportunity that we really drilled together, both departments, police and fire. Because prior to this, we wouldn't even enter the school. We would wait for the patients to be brought out. And that was what happened at Aurora, Colorado. And through lessons learned, we realized to be effective, to give the victims the best chance of survival, the first responders, the EMTs, the paramedics have to enter what we called one zone. So we made the commitment, I'd say the fire department, Trinity EMS, the paramedics, to buy the life safety vest, the helmets, the equipment. I never thought as a chief that I would be spending thousands of dollars to get bulletproof vests, helmets, but that is what we needed, that is the commitment we have to join in the police department, to actually going into the schools, getting to the patients and treating them and bringing them out to the triage. So to answer your question, it took us this long just for us as a public safety partner to get into the schools. So as far as if you want to volunteer, we always have local emergency planning agencies that we would always look for people to join, to come to the meetings, and certainly there may be a role that way for you, if you want to do that. So thank you for your question.
Can I just ask one question on that? That area, was that a smaller, less populated area? Yeah, so that's a situation where it kind of depends on where you're from, and that may make perfect sense there. As you know, this is a pretty well populated area, border, you know, the highways and Lowell and things like that. And not only are we starting to train multi-discipline within the town, you have a lot of mutual aid available real quick, and they're going to self-deploy. And before you know it, that's going to be an issue, we're going to have more cops in the area than, than we can even kind of handle. We have to, we're already trying to harness that and trying to figure out how we're going to deal with that, where they should go to, how they should be assigned, things like that. Initially, it's going to be very chaotic. But you'll see that it's effective, the partnership is effective. The Parkland shooting, the person that caught the bad guy, the shooter, was a neighboring police officer, wasn't from that jurisdiction, you know what I mean? So you're going to, you're training not only so that you'd work together, but any one of us could very easily be in Westford tomorrow helping with an act, he'll give you one of the first people there, depending on where it is. All right, so there are a lot of resources available. These discussions are good because that could very well be something needed maybe in the aftermath or something like that, coordinating how we get kids back to parents or something like that. But it's certainly helpful in, you know, in conversation.
Any other questions? Yeah.
All right, one more. In terms of like the high school and middle school- In terms of like the high school and middle school, do the principals ever think, like sometimes I go into events, like say I'm going to the theater and I'm sitting in the auditorium and I'm just going to look around and think, this would just be the perfect opportunity for someone to come in and blow out 300 of us all just sitting there waiting. I mean, how does the Alice apply and do we even think about how do we protect these events?
We just got to answer the question. So, for the viewing audience, the question is, what about a non-school-specific event? So, if there was an afternoon or evening rental or someone was using the performing arts center and there was a mass of people there?
Well, like, say like the middle school theater program or pep rally or, you know, the high school sports games, things like that.
Okay. So, how would, aside from regular classroom, I guess, drilling, what will happen when it comes to rolling out an Alice response?
And that's why the Alice response is so important, because it gives you options. So, when we do announce a larger event, we say, this is where your exits are. We tell the audience first. But knowing the Alice response, that there are situations or classrooms that have multi-doors, then you have, that's when you start making your informed choices. Do I evacuate, barricade, or counter? And that's why we want to give those people the options. So, if that situation happens in a large area with a lot of people, there's different tools they can use. So, it's not perfect, but it's given them some options.
Yeah. I think the reality is, you know, for all of us, what we've seen going on throughout the world, you know, concert venues, a restaurant, anything like that, I really think it's up to each one of us, whether we're hosting an event or attending an event, that everybody is starting to think about, you know, really the unthinkable. What if something like that was to occur? What am I, what am I going to do with my family or the guests that I'm with? So, I think it's definitely important that we're mindful of it and announcing to people how to get out and those type of things. But the unfortunate reality is, you know, for all of us, as just anyone who's going to go out in the public, it's really a, you know, collective effort to make sure that we all do our best we can to stay safe.
What's that?
You got to fend for yourself.
Well, yes, a lot of it depends on, you know, is it a school sanctioned event? Or, you know, there are issues too, where others just come into our buildings, say at night. It might not even be a Charleston Public Schools event, but a dance school has rented the auditorium or something. That's not a group that's really kind of part of our purview. They may not have gone through the training. I think that's, any school staff that are in the particular event would obviously be following the protocol. And I think that the key point there is, is the inform. It's getting people to know what's going on as quickly as they can so that they can make some independent individual decisions for themselves, particularly when you have members of the, like an audience coming in that aren't all going to be on the same page about how to respond to something. God forbid it happened. Yep.
I don't know if maybe this was what I was trying to get at, but I mean, aren't there, do we school assembly where?
Yep. So, this is a follow-up question about, like I said, an actual school sanctioned event that happens to be in the auditorium or the cafeteria, things like that. So, a school sanctioned event that we would actually be responsible for, our kids and our staff are going to know, because you never know, even when we're drilling, we're going to drill at different parts of the day, kids might be in the cafeteria when we actually do a drill. So, they need to respond to the protocol with whatever adults are there at the time. And it's that inform piece, you know, where is the, the active threat? What part of the building is it in? If I'm in the cafeteria, you know, should I go with the adults and actually evacuate as opposed to trying to get into a safe area and lock down? Is the threat, you know, right outside the cafeteria and I need to lock down? They will know that because they will have gone through those scenarios and at least have talked through different options. But you really aren't going to know the specifics because the things change so often as to what your response is actually going to be until you're there in the moment. But I am confident that our staff and students, between now and the next couple of months, as we start going through these drills with them, will have those conversations about what to do if I'm in gym, what to do if I'm in the calf, what to do if I'm, you know, in the hallway and something were to happen. We'll be having those conversations and drilling for that.
I was wondering what the, what the staff are trained to do with injured students? Does it depend on severity of the injury or what, in various sort of training in regards to that?
So, the question is, what are staff actually trained to do with regard to injured students who might be in their care?
Right, right.
Any of you want to cover that? Or do you want me to?
Well, I know part of the rescue task force protocols now, why we're drilling so intensely with the fire department is to get access to those people. I would like to think that people would do all they could to help an injured person, the best they could with what they're dealing with, like any of us would in any situation. I certainly would like to think that if a teacher or an adult saw a student that was injured in some way, they would do all they could to help them. But again, it's, it's all depending on what's going on. If, if, if there's a student out in the hallway and there's a threat coming and there's 40 more students that you could lock behind the door, you've got to make the decision, what do I do for the most people to be safe? These aren't easy questions. But the most important thing is to do something because traditional lockdown is to do nothing. And those that would do us harm know this. And that's why the injury rate and fatality rates are so high, because they know in the past, 30 people are huddled in a corner and it's not very difficult to cause significant carnage when that happens. So, the important thing is to do something. But not, not an easy question.
I can attest that the, that your, your, your staff, your teachers, your principals, they do an excellent job. We go there for broken legs. You see us there for medicals, for broken arms and seizures and different, and you guys do a great job of helping us, of keeping the patients calm, of treating, you know, bloody noses and other things. They do a great job. So, I am confident that, God forbid, an incident happens, they will step up. They will, because I see it every day. You guys do a great job. And that's one of the things that when we were doing the Alice drill, I think one of the, we take a look at things that we did well, but we also take a look at things that we can improve on. And one of them is the supplies. You guys have defibrillators in the school. We do CPR training. You guys are very good at that. One of the things that we're looking at is maybe increasing some of the medical kits, trauma kits. So, God forbid this happens, it is available in the schools. You have a defibrillator in the school, but maybe we should have like a trauma kit in the school as well. So, that is something we're working on. That is something as a result of the training we've done with the police department, with the schools. And I think the question that came up earlier about liability, yes, there is liability. I think the liability is if the school doesn't plan, doesn't plan with the fire department, doesn't plan with the police, doesn't plan with the EMS providers, Trinity and Greater Law Paramedics. So, there's your liability. And I think we're pretty much on the way to, you know, moving forward and addressing those issues. But one of the things I think we do is, when we have an exercise, we have a drill and we're going to be doing it throughout the year, we'll look at what we did well, but we always look for areas that we can improve upon. We don't always pat ourselves on the back, but we like to improve. So, I'm confident that we have the staff and the people here to carry out the drills. So, thank you.
And in addition, just to address the kind of injury piece, our nurses were all given the stop the bleed kits and training. So, now all the nurses in our buildings have that as well.
Yes. Emily?
Do you know what percentage of your faculty are CPR certified?
I don't off the top of my head. Oh, the question was, do I know what percentage of our staff are CPR certified? And I don't.
If I could answer that, I mean, I don't have the numbers, but I know quite a bit do participate. We do partner up with Trinity EMS. We do the training. We do it at the school. Sometimes we do it at the firehouse. And we have a great participation rate, not just from the schools, but also town hall personnel and personnel throughout the town. So, that is an effort that we've made. Trinity is a great public safety partner in helping us, as well as Greater Law Paramedics. So, I don't have the number, but we do have quite, I think we have great effort and great commitment from the, from the teachers. And also, I mean, it's, it's nice to know that, you know, you're expanding your medical kits to meet some of the needs and things that we face every day.
Any other questions in the back of the room?
What do you think for substitutes and the staff that get hired after, do you really do a great?
Very good question. So, this one was, what is the plan for substitutes or staff that get hired after the first day of school and who didn't necessarily participate in some of the trainings today? So, substitutes are an issue that we're, we need to address because our substitutes on any given day can be in any building in the district. We are going to actually be working as one of our, like, we had identified a number of different projects last year to work on. And one was this updating of our emergency responses and whatnot. So, one of the projects we're actually working on with our personnel office this year is an updated orientation and almost like a preparation program for our substitutes to go through, so that they actually will come into the district, participate in some workshops before actually going out into the field and subbing. It's a little bit of a work in progress because the school year started and, and, you know, we're obviously putting things in place as the year is going. But it would be no different from, say, a new staff member that starts now. You know, we have a retirement and someone comes on board in a position. Immediately as part of the new hire, they're going to participate in the e-learning component. So, they will have to go through a myriad of different, like kind of staff sign-offs for different district policies and procedures and things. But they'll also do the Alice e-learning piece, which is all computer-based, so that they'll get their general understanding of what's happening. When they actually get to the school, the different school emergency plans and responses will be shared with them so that they'll know that. And then they'll immediately kind of jump into their school drills. So, the same thing is like, again, fire drills were a little bit predictable in the past. We didn't quite drill as much for some of the Alice options-based responses, but that's going to become part of our regular routine. So, we're going to be drilling on that throughout the course of the year. It's not only covered in September and then you don't think about it again until the next year. So, it'll be an ongoing training throughout the course of the year. And those new staff will just jump in as they're hired. But we are going to, we did identify a bunch of different issues with our substitutes, just again, because of the frequency and you never know which building they might be subbing in. They've got to kind of learn potentially seven different protocols and things along those lines. But that is a project we're working on this year to try to streamline that.
One thing that makes it easier, so we used to have, as part of our protocol for crisis management, we'd have codes for different emergencies. Now, because of substitutes or even parents who come in for meetings, we got rid of all the codes. We're just naming what it is on the intercom. So, everyone knows, everyone has the same information at the same time. So, that's going to help out with that as well.
If we take, you know, one or two more questions if we have them. And then if not, go ahead.
Did you email one of the every child in the district?
I'm sorry?
Email notifying people of it?
The connected?
Went to every parent in the district.
Yeah. And it was, it was on Facebook quite a bit too. I have to say, it's very difficult to get, you know, thousands of people to turn up for something. When we did the staff training on September 18th and 19th, whatever the date was with the staff too, I really thought we were going to get a lot of questions from parents about what this new response is. I take it that parents actually kind of trust our work and trust that, you know, we're putting good systems in place, that we're working very closely with our staff. I think our staff do a great job of kind of selling for us what our programming is and what our responses are because they're very connected with parents and students in the district. So, I take it as a positive that, you know, there's a good trust level in what we're doing. I think in, in talking with, you know, police and fire also, we're not the first community to implement Alice or an options-based response. We're almost kind of at the, the end game. So, a lot of our other districts or other communities in the area have already implemented an options-based training and we were kind of lagging. So, we're kind of catching up to them at this point. We want to be on the front edge going forward. But I think it's a topic that a lot of people have read about, they've heard about. They, they have a sense of what's happening now. So, I take it that there's some comfort in, in people knowing that. All right. If there's nothing further, what I would say we would do is kind of wrap up the, the public forum. I will certainly stay around if people had individual questions or wanted to talk. And I know our principals will, will stay around and talk individually if people had questions that they didn't either feel comfortable asking as a group or just want more follow-up on. And then what we will do is we'll make this PowerPoint presentation available online. It won't be, so the PowerPoint will be up tomorrow. Those three resources for parents are excellent. So, if you want to click on those, you can actually get those ways to kind of talk to your kids, what to talk about. That'll be up tomorrow. We'll work on some kind of an FAQ document that within the next week or two, we can also post and advertise. And that'll be kind of a rolling document. So, if people have additional follow-up questions or concerns, if they send them to us and we're getting the same questions and concerns, we'll start to incorporate those into the document as well and be kind of a working document to, to share with parents, not only now, but in the future, if they come and, and join our district. But I very much want to thank you for, for coming out tonight and the panel that was here, Chief Spiny and his staff, Chief Ryan, Chelsea Telemedia who taped this for us, and the school committee who really was the driving force between having this be the first community forum for the year, to, to talk about a topic that was relevant. It's in work in the schools. You're going to hear about it talking to your kids. And I very much appreciate you coming out this evening to, to participate with us. So, thank you.